And I welcome you to the McMinnville City Council Regular Meeting, April the 12th, 2022. Claudia, do we need to do roll call? Okay. Could you commence with our roll call?
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Good to see you.
Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Here.
Counselor Peralta. Council President Drabkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. This is the first time we've been back in this building and at the dais for two years. So bear with us as we're trying to get reacquainted with our equipment and how we do business. I continually look at my screen to be looking at people, and guess what? You're here. We've got some that are on, visiting through our hybrid service and on Zoom. But again, welcome. It's good to be able to greet people and see you and participate in governance. We will stand and do the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to lead that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and fair
Thank you for participating in the pledge with us. The next item of business tonight, we will have comments from our community members. And let me share, we're going to do this a little differently tonight. We have a few resolutions that I know we have individuals that would like to speak on particular topics. And what I would suggest is that we will call for public testimonies as we get to the resolution so that it's a part of the discussion within the resolution. But if we have anyone in the audience or on the line that would like to address the city council on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we will hear those comments. Again, comments are going to be limited to three minutes per person. If you want to speak and you're virtually, raise your hand and Claudia will recognize you. We've asked for those that want to testify throughout some of the resolutions to turn in a slip, and then Claudia will help us with that. So Claudia, to your knowledge, do we have anyone that would like to speak to us on anything other than resolutions that we're going to be talking about this evening? Mark Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be back and see everyone in person. I'd like to talk to you about the bypass. You had a work session earlier this evening talking about that. I opposed the city funding the bypass 10 or so years ago. I don't remember the exact time, basically for the reason that I thought that it was only going to lead to another request for money. And sure enough, you got another request for money this evening. I think I thought it was a bad precedent, and we ended up loaning or agreeing for a loan for $3.2 million, which we paid almost $1 million on. We now own $2.3 million. And now the state is asking for another $3.6 million. Basically, we're going to end up paying $10 million over the term of the loan when you include principal and interest for our portion of the bypass. I do not think that city dollars, and I said this before, I'll say it again, should be used for a state highway. They should be used to fix our city streets. I mean, this is especially ironic, given that tonight you're going to discuss how to raise more money to run the city, and instead we're borrowing more money. Beyond that, we are in a climate change crisis. You know that. You passed a resolution about climate change. I fail to see how construction of another four lane freeway to encourage more traffic positively impacts the climate. In fact, it negatively impacts the climate. I see the same attitude towards paying for the bypass. Let's borrow the money now, and we'll let future generations pay for it, as I do about climate change. Basically, let's just keep driving our cars, and then sooner or later, somebody, our grandchildren, great grandchildren, or whatever, is going to have to deal with the consequences. Motor vehicles kill more than 30,000 Americans every year. I can see that the Newburgh Dundee bypass is essentially the third rail of local politics, and speaking against it is not a good thing to do. And I understand that our society revolves around the automobile and that change will be difficult. But I'd like to think that we're long past the point of mindlessly accepting the death and destruction of the planet. I honestly don't know what the solution to this problem should be, but I do know when you've dug yourself into a hole you want to get out of, the first thing you do is stop digging. Please stop borrowing money to pay for the bypass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Claudia, any other?
Liz Marla Steiner, is your item on the agenda, or is it public comment?
I believe it would be public comment because I just want to reiterate what Mark's concern is. I mean, if we move forward on this, I'm hoping that we could have some public meetings, you know, where you invite those of us to, you know, come and give our concerns or, you know, or support. That's basically all I want to say. So I'm all about what Mark just told you.
Thank you for those comments.
Mayor, additionally, Joya would like to talk during public comment. She does have to talk about Resolution 6B through 6D. She's at a conference, so this is the only time that worked for her. If you
That would be fine, Claudia.
Joya?
Good evening. I guess my video isn't working for some reason. Good evening, Mayor, councilors and attendees. Joya Goodrum, President and CEO of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, representing our 440 members and the greater business community. Thank you so much for giving me some time. I really appreciate it. Our offices are located at Northeast Fifth Street in McMinnville. Thank you again for giving us time this evening to voice our concerns regarding the proposal to increase fees paid to you by McMinnville Water and Light. These fees will adversely affect our business community and the residents of McMinnville. Our community is already experiencing housing affordability issues, and we are just coming out of a two-year pandemic. Businesses and residents alike are just beginning to recover. Now is not the time to implement a 5% increase to sewer, effectively a 10% tax on sewer, a 4% increase on electric rates, and an increase of 7% to 8% on water. We understand that the city is experiencing a financial crisis. Our concern is that we have asked questions about the financial issue and have not had answers that tell us the exact issue. This is especially concerning since you are asking for over $3 million from the community. Our list of questions has gone unanswered, and before you approve the resolutions, your business community is asking you to hold off on a decision so that all parties within the community can be at the table for discussion. There has been no opportunity for discussion with the business community nor the residents, to our knowledge. I personally sit on the stable table, the McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council and the McMinnville Leadership Council. None of these entities have been asked for feedback nor concerns about what you are proposing. How this has been rolled out is not indicative of how this community works nor the McMinnville way. We are deeply concerned and ask that there be a moratorium on these initiatives to allow the community and our businesses to respond. In addition to these concerns, the proposal targets two businesses in our community, one of which is the largest employer and the actual reason our power rates are so low. The ability of our community to bring other businesses to McMinnville hinges on our ability to provide low utility rates. Businesses live by their bottom line, and if McMinnville is unaffordable, they will go elsewhere. Our business community is already squeezed by the cat tax, which is a 7% of gross revenue. Adding this new fee to the business community is just another tax that will impact their ability to grow, to hire additional staff, or purchase equipment. There are limited public dollars, and they should be spent wisely and well. We do not believe that now is the time to implement these taxes on businesses and our residents. Additionally, seniors and low-income families will be impacted. Please consider waiting to see what happens with the Fire District discussion before implementing this new tax. Thank you for considering our request to hold off on voting for these resolutions. We know you have a difficult job ahead of you as you work through the city's financial issues. Allow your business community and your residents to help you find an equitable solution so everyone wins. A thriving community exists because its businesses are strong. Keep McMinnville affordable for business and residents. Thank you in advance for making the decision to not move forward with these initiatives. I thank you for your time and for squeezing me in. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Joya. Claudia, any others?
Members of the public? No, but I do want to state for the record that we did receive several public comments that will be entered into the record and be made part of the packet for tomorrow.
Thank you, Claudia, and thanks for those that have spoken this evening, and especially for those written comments that will be written into the record, and we will keep that in the record. That now takes us to advice and information items, and so we will have reports from the councilors on committee and board assignments. And I'm going to start with Sal, and we'll work our way down. Sal, and then Kelly, and Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report, but a good one. As I've mentioned in the last several council meetings, we have been advocating for the region for transportation dollars through the council of governments. And good news, out of $50 million that the state is awarding for highway funds through the resources that we're advocating for, they allocated 35 out of 50 million statewide to complete the McDonald Aurora interchange, which will make it easier for us to get out to Portland and for folks in Marion County to get out onto the I-5 corridor. So for us to get 2/3 of those state funds into the region was a pretty big deal. And I'm very grateful, Mayor, for your help and lobbying for that. It was definitely a team effort from a lot of local government officials, but your testimony was one of several that was very significant. So thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Kelly.
I do have a report for YCAP, but I don't have it with me tonight, so I'm going to give it to Claudia, and she will forward it to the council so they will receive it. Just a couple of comments. I attended the PAC Committee for the Third Street Revitalization and found it very interesting. We're kind of finally coming to a conclusion on trees. It's still a little bit iffy, but it sounds like we're going to continue with the grove approach. We were offered three different scenarios, and we tended to go towards, there was a general consensus that we liked the lodgepole pines and things like that in a grove type of atmosphere, and it would probably be the fastest one to get up so that it would cover the streets well. So that's my report on that. Thank you.
Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a YCOM meeting today, and looks like we're going to be using the new 911 revenue to finally get to the 80/20 split that a consultant brought before. YCOM Executive Board is a efficiency thing, and that's going to have some cost savings for the city. So preliminary in that, but that's a positive note for YCOM, and we adopted our budget meeting agenda for that. So should have some more final numbers for you guys on that soon, but look to be about 140,000 cost savings if we end up going with that new base rate structure. And that's due from two legislative cycles ago. The 911 tax on phone bills went from 75 cents to a dollar, and now it's going to $1.25. So we're just finally, after a couple of years, seeing those revenues trickle in, and it's allowed us to make some shifts as a region with our emergency communications and how that rate's established. So should be easier for us to forecast in the future and going forward. So positive note there. Airport Commission, we haven't met again since our last council meeting, but you will see in your packet tonight that we're going to be looking at the lease extension of the modular for Jerry Trimble Helicopters, and I see Jerry and Allison in the crowd. And then on Fire Districting, we're wrapping up some polling on that, and I'll let Jeff or Rich speak to that. Overall positive, but we're going to have a presentation from our consultant on that, and so I don't want to put any words in their mouth, but overall positive.
Thank you, Adam. Let's move down to Chris, and then we'll have Zach, and then Council President Drabkin.
I think I'm going to be the most verbose tonight. I have nothing to report.
Zach?
Thank you. Landscape Committee hasn't had a meeting. DEIAC is coming up this Thursday. Those are my two active ones, and then some blasts from the past. MAC PAC, staff and I are going to make a presentation to a subcommittee of the McMinnville School District germane to facilities and long-range planning, and so we're going to roll out a presentation to them to get them up to speed on the MAC PAC project, as well as another thing that staff and I have been working towards is a joint school district city council meeting, and that sounds like it's on the books for end of June. So that'll be exciting times. Thanks, Claudia, for doing the big lift.
Council President?
Thank you very much. The McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission has launched a task force, has taken a direction from the council recently related to turtledoves, and so that task force met this morning for the first time and is going to maintain a fairly vigorous schedule over the next six months to hopefully bring you back a proposal for evaluation and review at that time. And then Visit McMinnville had a day-long board meeting that I don't believe I've presented on in here. And of note, some of the first board members are starting to term out. So two of their board members are going to be timing out, and their executive team is going to be reaching out to the DEIAC to talk about recruitment process and assure that, or work to make sure that in the process of filling that seat, that there's sufficient advertising in the community and that their recruitment process is being evaluated as well. Additionally, they're planning for the 2023 fiscal year to be up about 11.8% after being up again this year. So generally, as an organization, they're doing very well. And as part of this year retreat, too, was looking at refining the kind of working vision, mission, and values. And one of the lines around vision that came out, which I think this is a good place to kind of summarize what the board is working on, is the vision is being refined to cultivate the visitor economy in McMinnville to enhance the quality of life for our community. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. I have two reports this evening. The first one is that the Mid Willamette Valley Transportation Advisory Committee met on Thursday, the 7th of April, and we were going to have a member of the OTC, which is Oregon Transportation Committee, Representative Julie Brown, join us, but she had a last-minute commitment and wasn't able to come and update us on the things that the OTC are involved in. But we did have a report on the OTC decisions for the IIJA flexible spending, and Mike Jaffrey, who represents the COG and transportation, gave us a report. And of the monies coming to the state of Oregon between 2022, 2026 is 4.1, or excuse me, $412 million in flexible funds. And of that, 52 million are going to be going to electric vehicle charging infrastructure around the state. So we were able to be brought up to speed a bit on the OTC and using those dollars that are coming to us. Other things they talked about is seismic refits of bridges throughout the state, and I won't go into all the detail. We also had a construction project update from Liddell Francis of ODOT, talking about all of the major projects that are being executed within the state, and they did a great update on our Three Mile Lane Bridge, and that, as you all know, last week, the temporary bridge opened up. And so that is one of the largest projects that they reported on. We had a report from Catherine Seva, who's the Adaptive Program Manager from ODOT, as Office of Climate Control, talking about climate control or climate change adaptation and resilience in their road mapping, and we had a good discussion on that. Other business, we just talked a little bit about the effectiveness of the group with the OTC and what we could do to have a more opportunity to use local dollars that are coming through this ODOT for projects that we see are critical. And then last Wednesday, we had Murak and both Heather and Walt Gao were out of town, so Kelly McDonald ran our meeting. We had one item on there, which is dealing with the facade grants that we do to beautify our downtown and that we match some of the restorations to the outside of the building. We had a request for a locked gateway down at the gallery theater upstairs. There are some offices, and there's a lot of lingering that's downstairs that scare people away from that, and they asked for us to look at doing our matching on that project, and we determined that we needed to go back and talk about safety pieces as compared to the facade improvements. And so we're going to bring that back up at a later date to talk a little bit about if we can look at adding safety features to buildings, and so more to come from that perspective. Let's now move over to department heads. And Amanda, anything to report this evening?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, actually, I do want to mention that we have a nice group of candidate pool for the new municipal judge position, and we'll be having first interviews on Thursday. And then there will be the special meeting next week on the 19th for you all to interview the final candidate or two. And then we're still on track to be able to have a new judge sworn in at your May 10th meeting, so we're really thrilled.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll go over to the chief. Rich?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm just returning from a 10-day vacation in Tennessee, so the fire department's running great while I was gone. Things went really well, as far as they told me. And one thing I did want to, just a quick note, Counselor Garvin brought it up, we did get some preliminary information back from our polling that was conducted. The polling company will be in a joint work session May 24th to present their interpretation of the polling results. I am not a polling professional, so I don't necessarily want to try and interpret their results, but they look favorable from their preliminary views.
Thank you, Chief. Scott, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other than thank you for the hybrid system, and it seems to be working well. I know you and your group have put tremendous efforts into this.
Glad to see it working. Can everybody here in the back okay? Make sure, okay.
You're the only one that still looks like you're, you know, at home with three screens.
Jeff?
I find myself looking for an unmute button. Welcome back to the council chambers, everyone. A couple of items to report. Every 10 years, the city of Portland convenes a charter review committee to review their form of government, and the first time in my almost 35 years in Oregon, they've actually recommended a change in government. The Charter Review Commission has recommended that the city of Portland leave the commission form and establish a mayor council form of government with a city administrator. In the context of that, I've been invited to make a presentation on form of government to the Portland Executive Association this week, so I'll be up in Portland making that report to them. It was helped by ICMA staff to prepare the report. And then second, just a reminder, as a result of recent legislative change, the city council are now mandatory reporters for suspected child abuse. And in an attempt to provide you better tools in that mandatory reporter role, your April work session will be closed training provided by Juliet's house, and they will be providing the stewards of children training. It will be in this space on April 20th commencing at 5:30, and I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Let's now move to our consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda this evening, and I would ask if there's any counselor that would request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda. Seeing no movement there, I would ask for some motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. No moved. Second. It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And the consent agenda? I will be standard correct. Zach seconded the motion. You know, it's an echoing. Okay. So what we've got is the consent agenda is passed unanimously 6 to 0 this evening. Thank you. This takes us to a number of resolutions tonight, and our first resolution that's up is Resolution Number 2022-17, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to a lease between the city of McMinnville, the leasur, and Gary Wells and Allison Rowe, collectively the leasees. And so we will turn over to our city attorney, Amanda Gao Hinman, to present. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Amanda Gao Hinman, city attorney. I'll refer the council to the packet, the staff report that begins on page 32 of the packet, I believe. Just as a highlight, prior to March 1, 2022, the March 1, 2022 Airport Commission meeting, the lessee in this matter had submitted a request to extend their lease term with regard to an office modular building that's located on the site. Currently, that office modular building use is set to expire on May 1, 2022. At that time, they had requested either a rolling five-year term or to end at the same time as the current overarching lease for their hangar, which is May 31, 2038. At the Airport Commission meeting, the Airport Commission ultimately did not recommend to extend the lease term that was requested by the lessee, but did recommend an extension of three years to May 1, 2025 for the office modular building, with an additional two-year option to extend that office modular lease upon evidence that the office modular building is compliant with applicable laws and regulations, and that the lessee has submitted any and all applicable applications necessary to either remodel the existing hangar or build a new hangar to incorporate the uses currently housed in that office modular building. Given the considerations of COVID-19 and recent supply chain issues, along with the incentive of the additional two-year extension being tied to certain performance metrics that will demonstrate either renovation or the new hangar, staff is supportive of the Airport Commission's recommendation, and so is supportive of, recommends that the council adopt Resolution Number 2022-17. And I will note, as was previously noted by Counselor Garvin, we do have Jerry Trimble Helicopters, which is the business that operates out at this particular area, this particular hangar in the audience. So if there are any questions or if they would like to speak, the council should know that they're in the audience tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amanda? Go ahead, Kelly.
Uh, in addition to the issues with the, the, uh, trailer, I, are we still dealing with him parking with, on the taxiway?
Um, so there is, so under the current overarching lease, there is an area of the premises that's outside of the hangar that I think you're referring to, where parking occurs in a taxi lane object-free area. Um, that was not discussed at the Airport Commission meeting. Um, the parking wasn't brought up, uh, but staff have had conversations with Jerry Trimble Helicopters about that parking issue. And, um, if council would like further exploration of that, um, we do have a recommendation to discuss parking, to address parking.
I would be interested in further follow-up on that.
Okay. Well, I came prepared, so I'm going to distribute, uh, a red line, uh, a revision to the council.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, um, so the public knows what was just distributed to council. This is, um, some additional revisions. There's a new paragraph three that's been, um, proposed, and this has been discussed with, um, Jerry Trimble Helicopters. And so my understanding is that they're comfortable with this language. I, I'll just read it into the record. So the new paragraph three says temporary lease modification. For so long as the modular building remains on the lease premises, lessee agrees it will not make use of the western twenty feet of the lease premises currently used for parking, labeled as western twenty feet, and will place no obstructions in the western twenty feet. Lesser authorizes lessee its customers, guests, and invites to park in designated public parking at no cost or expense to lessee. For so long as lessee is not making use of the western twenty feet, lessee's annual rent will, shall be reduced by the per-square footage rate multiplied by four thousand square feet, the area of the western portion of the premises. Once the modular is no longer on the lease premises, lessee's use of the western twenty feet may resume, and lessee will resume paying the full annual rent unless the parties agree otherwise. And then the old paragraph three is changed to paragraph four.
Any questions to that redlined?
Yeah, can you dive in a little bit on, um, on the actual implication of the rent reduction, um, and, and the multiplier?
Right. Yes, I can. So, um, right now, the lessee, all, um, tenants out at the airport pay a certain rate for their rent. Um, and since this portion is included in the leased premises of their lease, and essentially what this provision says is they won't use that area for the duration that the office modular is in place, um, it was negotiated and frankly, and, and my recommendation is, is that it makes sense that they wouldn't pay for that part of their lease if they're not able to use it.
And as far as public parking out there, we have ample public parking, so it doesn't put any undue burden on Allison, Jerry, or JTH Helicopters?
Yes, correct. We, uh, I had the public works staff go out and verify the parking, and, um, we've communicated with Jerry Trimble Helicopters, and I can at least speak from my perspective. It seems that we're in agreement that the public parking is sufficient to meet their needs.
My only other question would be if, uh, Jerry or Allison would like to speak to that and if you, you're okay with this revision.
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, the final sentence, what is the intent of that?
The final sentence in the new paragraph three?
Yes.
Uh, so the, basically what it is, is, um, since the use or the lack of use of the western twenty feet is tied to the office modular building still existing, that when the office modular building, assuming it got removed, that they would then be able to use the western twenty feet. But I think the intent of both parties is based on the incentive that's added into the, um, extension, the op, two-year option to renew, um, is that either a renovation or a new hangar is going to be constructed. And so why it's, the reason that it says unless the parties agree otherwise is that it's very likely that there could be a change in the lease based on whatever renovation or new hangar occurs during that time.
I understand. I, I worry that we're going to end up right back in the same position.
I, I will, um, fully admit that this is kicking the can down the road a little bit.
Thank you, Chris. Representative, uh, Jerry, welcome.
Mark Hoyt of Sherman Sherman Johnny and Hoyt here on behalf of Jerry Trimble Helicopters. Uh, just wanted to respond to the counselor's question. Uh, we did review today the parking. There are all of the exterior parking in the Comcast lot, which is a primary public parking, which would be available to Jerry Trimble Helicopters. There's, uh, twenty-two spaces there. There are seven spaces on the lease ground, and I, I do want to address Counselor Menke's comment earlier that they're parking in the taxiway. In fact, they're not. They may be in the taxiway, but they're parking on the ground that they are paying for under the terms of their lease. And so when the city asked that this be done, the city was asking Jerry Trimble Helicopters to modify the lease agreement that the city signs quite some time ago, uh, and they've agreed, agreed to do that because the city is also providing the accommodation regarding the single, uh, the trailer on the property. And so we're appreciative of that and we're responding in kind. We have verified that there's adequate parking. The city has confirmed that there's adequate parking. We may end up kicking the can right back in this place, um, but the city has been very firm in its position that it's going to enforce its lease rights as it relates to the modular, except with this modification, and Jerry Trimble Helicopters feels very strongly that they also have a lease and are entitled to those rights. And so we are, uh, working with the city because we would want to be good citizens. Uh, we also have a business to run, and they are moving from parking next door to a hundred and fifty-yard or so walk through the rain to their office. And so it's not without a certain amount of sacrifice. We all are Oregonians. We know it rains. We can walk in the rain. It's not a problem, but it is a minor inconvenience that the business is agreeing to shoulder.
Thank you, Mark. Any further questions for Mark? Seeing none, thank you for that insight.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, appreciate it.
Let's have, uh, any council discussion at this point?
I'd just like to add that I think this is a good resolution. It allows, uh, JTH to continue flights go out there, which is an asset to our McMinnville Airport. They get a lot of, uh, flights up and down, which helps our FAA numbers as an active airport, and, uh, appreciate them being willing to negotiate with us.
Thank you for that, Adam.
I'd like to echo that. Um, I, I had the privilege of going out there and having a conversation with them, and I feel like this is a good workable solution to the problem.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, I now will call for anyone that wants to speak on this subject that would have spoken in the public comment section. So if there's anyone that would like to, uh, address the council with comments, we'll give you three minutes each. So anyone, Claudia, have they signed up?
No, Mayor and Council. Anyone from the public? And anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Claudia. I then will ask for a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen.
Still moved.
Mayor, before, before the motion's made, I just need the council to be clear about, um, if you want the, um, exhibit A to the resolution as provided in the packet or as provided to you on the dais today, just so we're clear for the record.
I'd like to-
Exhibit A, meaning the amendment that you just gave us?
Correct.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion, uh, to adopt exhibit A as just presented to us by Amanda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And, and then I will call for a motion, uh, then, and, and, uh, resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen, as amended, which would include exhibit A. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Sal and, uh, and Adam?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, resolution number, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash seven, seventeen, uh, passes unanimously six to zero. Okay. The next three resolutions will be addressed under one staff report, but each will be voted on individually. And so, uh, before us is a resolution, uh, we'll start out with resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution established an in lieu of pay, a tax payment of ten percent by the Water and Light Commission to the city of McMinnville from the Electric Utility and repealing resolution number nineteen-eighty-eight dash thirty-one, nineteen-ninety dash four, and nine, and two thousand and three dash fourteen. And so we'll call on our finance director, Jennifer, to, uh, Quayor, to, to address the next three resolutions in one report. Jennifer?
So, um, for the record, Jennifer Quayor, Finance Director.
Could you maybe pull the mic just a little closer to you if it reaches that far?
Um, Jennifer Quayor, Finance Director for the, great. Yay. So, um, I have got a presentation that I'm going to share screen on Zoom, and then we should be able to see it together. Oh, it works. This is great.
Good job.
Yay. Hats off, IS. So, um, so we're here in, gosh, I didn't count the number of meetings. I think this may be meeting eight or nine or ten, um, about sustainable resources that we've been discussing since the summer. And the, the staff report starts on page thirty-nine of your packet. The presentation doesn't, you know, follow exactly along, but it gives a little bit of an overview. So, um, as mentioned, there are three actions in the staff proposal, and we also want to get guidance from council regarding wastewater rates if you all choose to, um, increase the wastewater franchise fee. So this is a calendar of the work that we've been doing. It's, um, I've shown this several times. So we started back in July, and now we are off the chart in our tenth month of discussing, um, sustainable resources and trying to bring additional funding online for next fiscal year and into the future. We have a history of leaning on reserves. Again, this is a graphic that, um, I've shared a number of times, where we historically budget more, um, expenses than we bring in in a current year. And that results in a budget gap, you know, a persistent budget gap of around two million So why, why are we on this journey? Why are we even discussing this topic? So, um, the council had as part of its, um, goals for the year to begin to address the, um, the gap in sustainable revenue for city services and to look at core services. And it's clear that new sustainable resources are needed in order to continue to provide the level of service in police, fire, library, parks and rec, all of our short and long-term planning efforts, the municipal court, then several other, you know, many other activities that, um, are nested in the general fund. Um, we also, with our strategic plan, Mactown twenty-thirty-two, there are a number of new initiatives in that fifteen-year plan that is, represents new work that the community aspires to, and resources to be able to move that, uh, forward as well is needed. We've also discussed the issue of deferred maintenance and limitations in terms of capital equipment replacement investments that, um, we have deferred over the years. And typically, if we're having trouble balancing the budget, these things will be the things that go. Um, and then we've also made a commitment to begin to rebuild the reserves at our new reserve target over, we have four more fiscal years to get that done, according to our policy that was passed in, I want to say, October twenty-twenty, or some, sometime thereabouts. So the, at our last council meeting on the twenty-second of March, we looked at a range of options, um, and there were a variety of mixes in terms of, you could, um, look to set rates for a city services charge at X level, and then, you know, maybe a little bit of additional payment in lieu of tax, or water franchise fee, or increasing the wastewater. And so that shows the, the lowest amount and the highest amount, if you were kind of, um, uh, taking different groups of, um, mixes of revenue actions. And so at that council meeting, the, the preferred instrument that we have been discussing for the last several months, the city services charge, it effectively was tabled in the discussion. And so because we also, um, got the message that we do need to bring additional resources on board, we came up with a new mix of options, um, that were also discussed, as noted on that previous slide. So that's why we're here today. So this is the staff proposal that's in the, um, that's described in the staff report. And what it does is it takes, um, two existing, um, fran, effectively franchise fees, um, up to ten percent, and it also would establish a water franchise fee. And the number that's included there on water with the asterisk, that is the net amount because we would assume that we would begin paying, um, for our water usage as a city. And you can also, just interestingly, if you look at the mix of who, who would be the predominant payer, there, the proportion that residents would pay and the proportion that, um, businesses and industrial organizations would pay. So the, the final forty-five, fifty-five, that's a weighted average of this particular mix that's on the table. Um, the city services charge is much more skewed towards residential payers paying a much larger proportion of the total, um, income that would result from that action that was tabled. So we're running into just some pragmatic issues of timeline in terms of developing the FY twenty-three budget. So we had to close a proposed budget so that we can get on the stick and produce a budget for people to be able to review. So we included this three-point-three-one-five in the budget, and this is, this is what it is funding. Um, it's about one-point-eight million dollars of that three-point-three would go to steady sa, city services that exist now. We included a little over seven-hundred thousand dollars in core services ad packages to be able to move the needle in a few select areas, um, as discussed also in our, um, series of meetings on core services. Um, we also included much more capital investments in deferred maintenance in this year's budget than we have historically. So that's another half a million dollars and change. And then there's also a reserve impact because every, our reserves, um, our reserve target is calculated based on operating cost, and that's a combination of personnel and materials and services. So we need to factor that cost in as well, that we would, if we spend this money, we also need to allocate two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars more in reserve to stay on our proportional target. also need to allocate $275,000 more in reserve to stay on our proportional target there. So this next slide is also a slide early on in our discussions back in the fall that, because a lot of the conversation I'm, I know is around utility rates and that kind of thing. And so this is, these are the five communities immediately larger than us in population, the city of McMinnville, and the six smaller. And the reason why we picked six is so that we can get Newburgh, another Yamhill County city in the mix. So McMinnville is not the lowest, lowest, but it is almost the lowest. And if we were to do the 10%, 10%, 10%, that would raise this to a little over $200. And so then we would be, I think, second, second, third to last in terms of how expensive our utility fees are for, for residential customers relative other communities of similar size. So. Yeah, that was an average bill for residential customers, correct?
And that was third least expensive or third most expensive?
Least. So then just looking at these as types of mechanisms. So as we have discussed, the city of McMinnville is not alone in Oregon in terms of trying to figure out ways, lawful ways to raise resources to keep up with the cost of doing business as well as expand services that the community is requesting their municipal governments provide. So we looked at whether payment in lieu of tax charges, are they unusual when it's a municipal electric utility? So these are all the electric utilities. We got the list from the, from the Utility Commission. And Claudia did heroic levels of research and was able to talk with every single community except for one. And so it's very normal to have payment in lieu of tax. And we found that we were the only community that had a different rate for a different customer class. Every other community had the same rate irregardless of what customer class was paying. Then this is just this afternoon, going on websites of the same communities, our water franchise fee charges, is this an unusual thing to do? And so I think it's half, have them. So one, two, three, four, five, six, have them. And Woodburn, I just, for the life of me, couldn't find the rate, but they did state they had one. And Forest Grove, I found a presentation alluding to it, but I couldn't find it confirmed in their budget. So this is the research that I did today on this particular one. And then in case this discussion leads us back to, hey, maybe we want to revisit city services charge, I just wanted to remind folks kind of where we landed, even though we tabled it as a concept three weeks ago, there was a clear feedback that option three was the preferred structure relative three or four, the two that we were considering. So in order to raise just $2 million, it's $11 and change additional cost. And if we wanted to try to leverage out to three and a half million, it would be almost $20. That's just a couple of ranges there. And of course, as with all of these things, there are effectively and an infinity number of options of mixes that you could come up with to reach dollar amounts. Let's see. Then, oh, this is, this also was presented a number of months ago, our city services charge is unusual. And you can see here, this was done by our rate consultant. So there are many cities who have looked to city services charges as a way to create a more sustainable revenue mix in addition to property taxes. And then I just put this together because it seemed like there had been some questions about how much property tax we, we generate here in the city of McMinnville. So you can see, this is the property tax isolated on the general fund. So these funds are unrestricted. Council may utilize these at their pleasure. There are two other types of property tax the city of McMinnville does receive, but those are restricted. So you, we couldn't use them. So I, those are for ballot measures that support bonds and also for the urban renewal district. So you can see just kind of the incremental amount. In one year, there was a big jump, and you might remember Comcast had been not paying its taxes for nine years because it was in a fight with the state about whether or not it owed any. And so there was a settlement, and that's why there was that small little balloon payment there for that year. And my battery is running low, but I think this may be. This is the last question. If you do want to raise wastewater franchise fee, we'd like to get your feedback so we can bring back to you a, a new wastewater rate increase. And the options are, we could do nothing next year, run it through the rate model and see what we would want to do out years as a prudent action, given the increase. We could just, we could increase it by the same amount. So if you picked increasing at 5%, then 5%. Or if you picked three, 3%. Or there, we could also phase it in and do half of it for half the year and half for the next year. So again, there are, there are a number of alternatives, and we just wanted to kind of gauge your thinking. Although I have in the meantime heard from wastewater, and they're leaning towards, it would be, it makes most sense to them to do it at the same rate. So if you all were to act on increasing the wastewater franchise fee by 5% from five to 10, they would want to do a five, they would bring back a 5% rate increase for sewer. Is there, is there thinking at this point? So that, yes, that is the end. And I know there is a lot of public comment. There's a lot of thinking about alternatives that's gone on, and so.
So let's, let's, let's go about it this way. Any, any questions of Jennifer from her presentation, from the council to her for clarification of any of the slides or the direction that the staff feels that they've received from the council? Go ahead, Zach.
Can we get those slides?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was hoping to have those slides before we vote tonight, just so I can flip back and forth between them.
You want me to email them right now?
That'd be great if you could.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Oh, you bet.
Any other questions?
Any water franchise fee results in the city also taking on the water, water bills as well, correct?
Yeah, we, we would assume that, yes.
Just, I just want to make sure that Claire, for my own clarity or for all of our clarity, I just want to make sure that any, any water franchise fee here is also going to trigger costs to the city in the terms, in terms of a water bill.
And an estimated $200,000 cost regard, just can cost to implement that regardless of, an operational cost regardless of what we could vote on as far as a revenue generator.
Thank you.
Other comments from council and discussion? Okay, we do have a number of, of individuals that would like to comment on this. Before, and again, specifically, we are going to discuss each of the resolutions if, in, in order of the resolution. And so the first resolution that we're going to be looking at is Resolution 2022-19, and this is the establishing of an in lieu of tax payment of 10% by Water and Light Commission to the city of McMinnville from the Electric Utility and repealing Resolutions Number nineteen eighty-eight thirty-one, nineteen ninety dash four, and two thousand and three dash fourteen. And before I open it up for discussion, I, as you know, as mayor, I only get the vote if there's a 50-50 tie. And I don't know that that's going to happen tonight. But I've been through a lot of meetings with Cascade Steel, with McMinnville Water and Light. Jeff and I and staff have, have, have had a lot of discussions. It's taken, it's been the focus for the last little while on my part. And this is, this is what I'm going to throw out. And you, you take it for what it's, what it is. It's just my opinion, and it sets the table. You know, I think personally, as it comes to in lieu of tax payments of going 10%, especially for the largest customer of McMinnville Water and Light, our largest employer in the community, that, that is a very hard reach. That's 1.5 million in, to an industry that has already set their budget for the year. And as a ex-banker, that would be very hard to accomplish, I would think. And so that's my opinion. I think what I would suggest to the council is to take a look at moving that in lieu of payment back to where it was many, many years ago, up to 6%. That would generate a half a million dollars. I think that's reasonable in my estimation. And then I would support us going back and looking at the city services fee and re-bringing that back up. I think that is a unilaterally a fairer spread among residential and commercial customers. And I think between those two things that we could close our gap. I know we've been dealing with how to implement the city services fee because we don't, we don't bill it. We have to work hand in hand with McMinnville Water and Light. But Mr. John Dietz is in the, in the, in the audience tonight. He and I have talked, and, and I feel very comfortable that we could move forward with the city franchise, the city services fee in a timely manner. It may be the 1st of August, but we would know that we could get there, and it, we could still maybe hit that target of July 1st. That would be what I would suggest, instead of having so many different fees hit, whether it be wastewater, water, city, city services fee, and then in lieu of, it's very complicated. I want us to be in a position where we can be successful later or earlier in 2023 as we approach the fire districting realignment. And I just, I, I think if we make it too complicated, most people have a really hard under, time understanding what we're trying to do. And so if we could do the in lieu of tax and bringing certain customers up to the 6%, to me, that's an easy step. Again, they'd have, we'll hear testimony from Cascade Steel, and then do a city services fee that we can attest to where we're taking the money and what we're doing would be an easier lift. And so I share that. I. What's that?
I just want to make sure that I understand you correctly, because the two options in front of us are multiple parts. What you're suggesting is just the bringing the industrial pilot payment in lieu of up to 6% where everybody else is currently at.
Yes.
So that there's an equity even across the board.
Yes.
And then not adding anything else at this time, but then going back and looking at the city services, city services for police, city services for library, city services for.
Yeah, it would go into the general fund to be allocated, but I would even suggest that if we knew where those dollars were going, we could share that with the, the public of what we're trying to do. And I'm not trying to put bridles completely around us because we don't know. General funds allow us to do what we need to do. But we do know that some are going to police. We do know some is going to be going to fire. We've already made some commitments there, library, parks, all of those types of things. And that's just a suggestion, but it's something that I have had numerous sleepless nights trying to figure this out. And, and I know there's a lot of public comment out there. There's a lot of concerns, and I think it's a cleaner approach. And I almost have to apologize to, to Jennifer because she's had sleepless nights working on the budget and all the things. But at the same token, we've had tremendous conversations on the city services fee. We're very much aware of that. We just need to pick the target that we want to hit. And then I think it's very easy. I think we maybe even have resolutions already drawn up for that. So I, I'm, I'm not asking for comment. I'm just sharing with you and setting a table that I think could bring us closer to some agreement this evening. Now with that said.
Mayor, before you go into public comment, knowing that you were going to make this suggestion, we do have an additional resolution for the council to consider that's specific to the payment in lieu of taxes and would simply have all payers paying at the 6%. And so Amanda is handing that out now, so you have it, and we'll make it available to the public as part of the record as well.
And so as you can read, this would be Resolution 2022-19, an alternate or amended. It would be an alternate. And so that's being brought before you. And I thank you, Jeff and Amanda, for that. I, I shared with the city manager and Amanda that that's what I was going to propose tonight. Chris?
I don't know. I have a question for Amanda, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question regarding this proposal. Should be waiting, should I be waiting till after the comment, or do I, do I hit staff?
I'm, I'm done presenting.
I mean, after the citizens' comments, or do I hit the staff?
Well, go ahead and give it, Chris, and then, because it sets probably some desires that you might have. But go ahead, yeah.
So my question to Amanda first is, in, in looking through the comments that we've received, there seem to be two different emails and comments that have come to us indicating a potential legal issue with this particular resolution. And so I would want some direction as to what that legal issue would look like. Do we really have an issue here and what your, your comments are to that issue? I know I've brought this to your attention already. But now a second email came in along the exact same lines. So I'm wanting clarification.
Specifically about the pilot?
Correct.
So the least risky option is alternative resolution that you have in front of you? Because that is the franchise, or that is the pilot that has been established since 1961?
Okay, so are you implying, I don't want to put you in that spot. I want to ask that question. Okay, that, that's good enough. I would like to suggest to the council, before we make any decisions on any of, of these tax resolutions, that we really need to consider going to a public hearing and allowing the public to really have comment on this. And you can see the reaction I'm getting from the audience. I have grave concerns that although we've been talking about this for eight to 10 months, it has fluctuated and varied and changed. And I know before I was a city councillor, I had a hard time following what was happening and knowing when was the appropriate time to comment and bring comments to the council to say, hey, this is what I think, this is what needs to be done. We, because we sit back here, understand the procedure. But our constituents, when I talk to the constituents, they really don't have a clue what our procedure is. So assuming that just because we've been talking about it for 10 months, they understood that was the time to communicate is not really a fair assumption. So I, I would just encourage, I'd even put a motion up to go to a public hearing after we've decided which direction we want to go to, then go to a public hearing to put this out, to let them comment, or whichever was appropriate procedure. I don't know what the, the right procedure is. But to give an opportunity for our, our constituents to come tell us because. to come tell us. Because one other point I'd like to make along those lines is that, you know, I was talking to my mother about this earlier today. She's one of my great advisors. She's not politically on the same side as I am. And when I told her we've been, what we've been discussing about and why we're discussing it, she said, you know, I don't understand why municipalities and governments continue to put taxes on the taxpayers without putting it to a vote. Why they don't, if you're going to take my money, why didn't you ask permission first? And, and I really, I'm concerned about the ramifications of how this is going to play out. So if not, if not, we're going to take, if we're not going to take this to a vote and let the people actually tell us they're willing to spend more money on behalf of our city, then at the very least, give them a chance to have a public hearing. That's what I have to say at this point.
Go ahead.
I am a little confused. Aren't we taking public comment from the audience, from the people in house today?
We are.
So this is a public hearing. I mean, do you
It's not a public hearing, but it's an opportunity to comment. And always, we take written testimony. And we've got plenty of that coming in tonight. So, so let me share where I would like to go. We have an opportunity to hear from individuals. We've taken this from the public comment portion of our meeting. And again, we are, will allow anyone that would like to comment on any of the three resolutions, even though we've only read the one, but we've had presentations on all three. Three minutes to address the council. We have an entity that is directly impacted, and that's Cascade Steel. And I've talked to Matt and I've talked to Con, and we're going to give them 15 minutes because we shared with them that if they had information to share that would be helpful to the, to the, the council, we would do that. And so we're going to start with them with 15 minutes, and there will be two that will be presenting within that 15 minutes. And then we'll go to Claudia and then ask anyone else that would like to, to address this. And I will hold you to three minutes each. So consolidate your comments. It's just like our normal commenting by public, the public. And so Matt and Con, if you'd like to come up and address us.
As we transition, I have a
Go ahead.
procedural question, and it's under the theme of Rusty.
Right.
Public comment, we're just listening for their duration of time, and then we're moving on to the next public comment. There's no discussion.
Absolutely. Taking public comment. We're not having a discussion. This is not, it's not a public hearing because we didn't set that up to have the comment.
Right.
It's just them.
Not a back and forth dialogue, right? Okay.
Okay.
And then we take, if we have notes or something, we take it later. And then at discussion, we could bring that up with staff or internally and ask that. Okay.
Again,
I think I, I think I remember how to
We will hear from Cascade Steel. We will hear from the public. We'll come back and discuss as a council and make a determination how we want to move forward.
Copy.
Does everybody feel comfortable with that approach? And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, even though you didn't say yea or nay, and I took it. But thank you for letting me do that. I will have, I think, better sleep tonight. Okay. Matt and Con, could you introduce yourselves? And, and, and then I know you've got a presentation for us.
Of course, Mayor. Can anyone hear me okay?
Yeah, you might bring the mic just a little closer.
A little bit better. Okay, there we go.
Everybody, go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to come before you tonight. It's always a pleasure to speak at these events. My name for the record is Con Tran. I am the state government and public affairs manager for Schittsor Steel, an Oregon-founded and headquartered company, and we're the parent company of Cascade Steel. I will be going. Matt, my colleague, has a little presentation and some remarks for you, and I will be kind of rounding the tail end of that. So I will now pass it to Matt to go first.
Yeah, so for, for the record, my name is Matt Ruckward. I am the chief of steel operations for Cascade Steel. And I am going to probably speak to both Cascade and the impact of Resolution 2022-19 through 21, I believe. So I just, I wanted to be, before I get started, and I can share with you the background of Cascade, as well as the impact of this on our operations, I wanted just really to highlight the fact that I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you. I appreciate the time. I know this is a important topic for both the City of McMinnville, but this is also a very important topic for Cascade Steel. So the next couple of slides really just gives you an overview of Cascade Steel. I'm assuming everyone knows where we're located. And then I was going to spend some time and talk about the impacts that this, or these proposals actually will have on Cascade. So Cascade Steel was founded in 1969. We've been in the community for 50-plus years. We are the only steel manufacturer that's still in the state of Oregon, and we're one of two remaining steel mills on the West Coast. That primarily speaks to the type of industry that we are in. We are in a, I would say, very competitive steel commodity business. We compete with both domestic players and international players, and the majority of our steel is shipped outside of Oregon. We have approximately 400 employees based in McMinnville. Of those 400 employees, 280 are steel mill workers in, members of the union. We manufacture primarily rebar and wire rod, which is basically a product that's used in the construction industry primarily. Our core values at Cascade, besides just making quality steel as safely as possible, is to be good corporate citizens, but also to be a sustainable company. We do a lot of things for the community. Our employees do a lot of things for the community, and we value our relationship with McMinnville. As I mentioned, we are in a steel commodity business. That business is extremely competitive, and it is cyclical. And that business has low margins. So we are extremely sensitive to any cost increases. And I do not have the luxury of passing on cost increases to my customers. It's a commodity business. So it's basically set by the market, and they don't frankly, the customers frankly don't care where the steel is manufactured. They just want a product at a specific price. So turning to the next slide, I'll just kind of walk through and briefly walk through the impact that these proposals will have specifically on Cascade. So this option two, this will increase Cascade's costs by over $1.3 million a year. That is a significant increase to Cascade. That actually represents about 20 hourly full-time employees. And if you look at the amount of revenue that the city is estimating this proposal will raise, Cascade will, Cascade will be solely responsible for 40% of that. That's, that's a big number, and that's quite frankly, something that is going to have a huge impact on Cascade. The impact of option one, which is the 3% to the 6% pilot, that will have about $600,000 increase to Cascade. That's over 100% increase in the pilot fees. And that also is a significant impact to Cascade. And in that proposal, we'll be approximate, we'll be responsible for approximately 80% of the estimated revenue that will be raised through that proposal. I do want to pause here and highlight the fact that Cascade used to be bigger. It used to have two production lines around 2009, 2010. Due to the economic situation, one production line was shut down. And I also want to highlight the fact that this increase, or proposed increase, is on top of other increases that we're seeing through the state of Oregon. Primarily, that's going to be the climate protection program, which is estimated to increase our costs by over $2 million a year. So I just, I just want to highlight the fact that, you know, again, we're in a commodity business. The prices that I can sell to the customers are not ones that I set. The market sets it. Any increases will impact our ability to grow. It will impact the ability for us to make capital investments. And that will include, you know, investments that we make annually, but also it could impact our ability to be cost competitive. So I really appreciate the time. My ask of you is really to pause and, you know, seek some opportunities for both the business community and the citizens to speak to some of the increases that are being proposed, and really be a part of the conversation in total. So I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Matt. Con?
Well, as you can tell from Matt's presentation, it's going to have a huge financial impact for us at Cascade Steel, right? And while I understand the city's need for general funds just to improve central services, and frankly, for a rapidly growing city like McMinnville, to just maintain your current level of services, it's a very important part of the, the city system. But again, the financial impact will not just be on our business, but also in the surrounding businesses, right? Matt's already touched up on how it will affect us. But you, you have other smaller, medium-sized businesses in the city that will also be affected. I doubt anyone uses much energy as Cascade Steel uses, obviously. But for some businesses, large or small, even a nominal increase or change in their bill may put them in the red or severely lower their profit margins, right? Especially the, the smaller businesses. And this goes to residents as well. Your, some of your residents are, let's be real, some of them are, there are some who are hanging on by a thread. So any change in their bill would, you know, maybe put them, put them over or just, just put them in a, in a bad spot. And again, these are, even a nominal increase could be effective, right? And I want, I want to be clear. I understand the city's in a financial predicament, and I'm not pushing back at all. It's just, and, and as public employees, it's your job to look for solutions. But I genuinely, genuinely do not think that the answer is to immediately increase taxes and hope the extra revenue gets you back on track or hopes, in hopes that it gets you to where you need to go. I think you, you can tell from the financial statement before that this kind of net negative in revenue has been going for about a decade now. So, you know, immediate money would not probably be your, your best solution. So I ask you the same as Matt's, just, you know, have continuance on the resolution, slow it down so we have more time to evaluate and discuss ideas. I'd also like to add in some ideas for you to think about, maybe like a phased-in approach or attaching a sunset to the increase, right? So where it's, it's increased at a certain level, but it may sunset after a few amount of years where the money, the C's money is back on track. And I know this conversation is ongoing for a few months now, but from my experience and speaking with some of the folks in your community, the business community in McMinnville, a lot of folks are saying that this is going very quick for a big piece of legislation that it is, right? With all the, the amount of money involved, it's moving quite rapidly. So I would, I would just urge you to slow down, have a continuance, and maybe think about some other options. And I would not ask you to do that unless I was open to, to helping you. That's going to be my commitment to everyone here. If, if the conversation is reopened, Cascade Steel and Schittsor Steel will be strong partners in the conversation, strong stakeholders in the conversation. And, you know, that's, that's our commitment to you, and we hope you, you have us as part of the conversation at the table. And before I end, because I promise I'm ending quickly here, I always want to thank, I've been on the other side of the day as before. So I, I want to thank all of you for your service and your civic duty to the city. Being a public official, publicly elected official is never easy. It's never easy when you're paid. It's much harder when you're volunteers, I imagine, which, unless I checked, you all are. So regardless of your decision, regardless of where you move, just want to thank you for your, your, your leadership and your approach to just taking on the burden of leading the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt and Con. Let's, let's now go and do public comments to the council. I know that, Claudia, we have a lot of, of written testimony that has been submitted. Is it appropriate? Is it, can we share who's written to us for those in the audience, if you have that available?
Yeah, we'll start with, not included in the packet, but will be included tomorrow, was Mark Davis, John Dietz, a letter from Con Tran, Carol Granger, Shannon Button, Terry Conlin, another letter from Con and Matt, Devin Palo from the McMinnville Industrial Promotions, Hattie Hurzog, Jennifer Smart, and Rachel Lee.
And I would just add, some of those, I know MEDP was one of those that had written a letter. Matt Water and Light and the Commission was one that wrote a letter that was signed under John. And again, we had a number from Cascade Steel as, with Matt and Con that were doing that. And you did mention MIP was another one, and the Chamber had written one, but that's a part of the packet. Okay, with that being said, please, as we call your name, we are looking at three minutes, and I'll raise my hand five minutes before, or five seconds before the three, the three minutes. And, and then we can go through and get everyone's comment on that. So who do we have first? Claudia?
If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and bring it to me. The only one we have so far is Sandy Festin.
Okay. Sandy?
Thank you. My name is Sandy Festin. Do I need to state my address?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I live at 2150 Northeast Grand Haven Street. And I'm pretty nervous, so I'm just going to read what I wrote.
That's great. Know that we're nervous sitting up here, too, sometimes.
I've been listening to discussions about the proposed city service fee for the past several months. I have also heard how the City of McMinnville is operating in the red. I have seen PowerPoint after PowerPoint of slides, bar graphs, and pie charts that I won't pretend to understand. But I do understand how a taxpayer feels to discover that their city budget is in the red and has been for the last several years. I'm failing to understand why the question has not been answered as to how the City of McMinnville ended up in this situation in the first place. Now, we are at a pivotal point, talking about not only making up years of failed budgets, but also absorbing current increased operating costs as well. This does not speak well to the hardworking taxpayers of this city. For the public to understand where we are going, we have to understand how we got in this predicament in the first place. Taxpayers need transparency and honesty about our previous budget shortfalls. We need accountability, no matter what the problems were in the past. There has to be some sort of explanation of events that got us to where we are today. I'm very concerned about the direction the City of McMinnville is heading. I recently listened to the council vote to restructure staff classification, including a vote in favor of making it retroactive, I believe, to last July, which was an extra cost over some of the other options that could have been chosen instead. In my opinion, this was an irresponsible vote to make while our city budget is far from being balanced. These are the types of decisions that make taxpayers take notice and why so many people are not in favor of tax increases. This does not instill a vote of confidence that my tax dollars are being used wisely. We are living in difficult times that take difficult decisions. I make them every time I go to the store with my grocery budget. It might be time for our city to take a good look at where money can be saved instead of only discussing, discussing how much more money is needed from taxpayers and businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandy.
Next, we have Mark Davis.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be brief. You already have a written comment from me. First point is, whatever you set the pilot at, I think it should be the same pilot for everybody in the city. I don't, you know, 10%, 6%, 3%, whatever you decide. I think whatever you decide. I think that a senior citizen on fixed income should be paying the same rate as Cascade Steel. The second point is one I've made several times, and I'm going to make it again. You carried out all the discussions of these fees and various and sundry things in work sessions where you do not allow public comment. I think that's part of the reason why you've gotten to this situation. If you were holding them in council sessions and inviting the business community, the general community to come in and talk to you, you wouldn't be at the end of the line trying to make a decision with all of a sudden everybody going, wait a minute. I mean, I just think those work sessions are just a way to avoid the public and you should stop using them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next, we have Victoria Keister.
Again, your first name?
Yes, I'm Victoria Keister and I reside at 1653 Southwest Bonneville Place.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll start out with just being very concerned about the idea of making a decision because it's lawful to do. I was really shocked to hear that because I think we also should play, we should also ask ourselves what is morally right to do. Now, our entire world has gone through a great deal of stress with this pandemic, and I appreciate the presentation, I'm sorry, ma'am, Ms. Quayar Smith put together. But I even think the presentation was a bit skewed, bringing in outer areas and not comparing the various towns and cities within our county. I think we have to look at the different water and power needs versus rural setting versus the city. Cascade Steel spoke to it being, having a product that is based on commodity that is set at a fixed rate. But I think about our local families that are living on fixed budgets. Inflation is said to be 7%, but I feel like it's more. Gas prices have doubled for food purchases have increased by what I feel is almost 20%. And the consumer is being squeezed. As a citizen, I'm concerned about this council's fiscal decisions, their responsibility and accountability to their own budget and their shortfalls. And we as citizens are all living within our means or trying to. So I feel that it's not unreasonable to ask that the city does not do so as well. So I would strongly urge you to all table this resolution altogether. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? And I have Rachel Lee on Zoom.
Okay. Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Lee. I'm from the law firm of Stole Reeves, and I'm here on behalf of Cascade Steel and its parent company, Schmitzer Steel, to speak to a legal issue here tonight. So thank you for allowing me to testify this evening. We only just became aware of these three proposed resolutions, and I've already identified a serious legal problem with one of them. So Resolution 2022-19 is proposing to increase this payment in lieu of taxes, that's sometimes referred to as the pilot payment. But there are two Oregon statutes that make Resolution 2022-19 unlawful. The first statute, which is ORS 225-250, requires that money that's earned by a municipally-owned electric plant and electric system has to be spent, quote, "only in connection with and for improving such plant or system and not for other municipal purposes, except as otherwise provided in ORS 225.270." So here in McMinnville, the additional funds that are going to be raised by Resolution 2022-19 are going to be used for other municipal purposes. We just heard a presentation from Ms. Quayar explaining the general city services that those funds are going to go towards. And doing that is going to be unlawful because the second statute, ORS 225-270, does not authorize that use of money from the municipal electric system. ORS 225-270 provides that some of the earnings from a municipal electric system can be taken by the city, quote, "for the purpose of reducing general property taxes," end quote. But here, the increased pilot payments are not going to be used to reduce property taxes. The plan, as we've just heard, the plan is to use these funds to cover the costs of city services. They're not going to be used to lower property taxes. And so because the increased pilot payments are not going to be used for the purpose of reducing property taxes, Oregon law prohibits using those funds for general city purposes. So the bottom line is that Resolution 2022-19 is not a solution, it's not a viable solution to the city's budget problem. It's an unlawful approach. And there has been apparently a new resolution handed around a few minutes ago during the meeting. I haven't seen that yet, but Cascade Steel can't accept that solution on the spot tonight. The city and the stakeholders need time to find an equitable and lawful solution. And we're very concerned that the pilot funds are not being used in a lawful way as it is even now. And then increasing them, whether that's to current levels or 1961 levels, would only make the situation worse. And so because of this significant legal issue, I'd ask the city council to delay a decision on all three resolutions to allow time to analyze them and for a conversation with stakeholders. Cascade Steel would welcome the opportunity for cooperative discussion with the city, but you should take enough time to work through all this and be sure that the measures that you're adopting are going to be real solutions and not unlawful ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Mayor and council, I think that's all the public comment we have.
Okay. Well, thank you for your testimony. I will now go back to council, and we can have a discussion with testimony that we've heard, presentations we've heard, and have a discussion as to how we want to move forward. So I'll just open up the council. Zach first, and then Chris.
Thanks. Amanda, will you help me understand that, the last testimony from Ms. Lee, will you help me understand that the claim she's staking on those statutes, the way that they were phrased to me, was that negated, and that talked about all pilot money ever? Or is that just, she's just applying that to the increased pilot money we had? Because the way it was phrased was like, all pilot money is not able to be spent on anything? Which would then negate all pilots across, I mean, we saw there's more pilots everywhere, so.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Ms. Lee. And I would also note that ORS 225-270 has existed for decades beyond when Measure 5 and Measure 50 were passed that don't actually allow us to increase our property taxes and thus use the pilot to avoid increasing property taxes. But what I will note is that our pilot has been established at 6% since 1961. Cascade Steel has been in McMinnville since 1969, and so has paid that 6% until a reduction was made in 1988 at 4.5% and then down to 3%. In the latest resolution, which was 2003-14, I believe, there is a statement in there that council was to look at that 3% rate in 2006. I don't think we've confirmed that that actually ever happened, but it's obviously been contemplated that that would be examined and has been examined repeatedly, particularly Cascade Steel's pilot, the reduction of them having to pay the 6% pilot.
Thank you.
Chris?
I have two questions. First one's to Jennifer. You had made the comment in one of the slides, excuse me, I'm sorry, that there's no other city with tiered pilot. We're the only city that has a tiered pilot system. Where you just heard from Cascade Steel, there's no other steel mill in the state also. So I guess my question would be, was any research done to determine, is there any city that has a pilot that has a user that is so disproportionately using the power as we have with Cascade Steel?
So, we did ask if there was a differential rate for any users, and the answer was no. I can tell you that there are other cities with large users, and for a period of time, Hyundai plant was in Eugene. They were by far the largest energy and water consumer. They paid the same pilot that everybody else paid in Eugene at the time. So we haven't gone to every city and said, who's your largest user? We've simply asked, do you have a differential rate? And across the board, the answer is no.
I would assume Hyundai probably isn't 40% of the pilot as we're seeing with Cascade Steel, but I-
I can't remember how much Hyundai used at the time.
So that'd be the first question that I had. And now, of course, the second question has just left the building. So I'll pass it on to somebody else while I wait for that to come back.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Sal?
I just had a couple of comments. I think Cascade Steel is between 20th and 30th in terms of electricity usage as an entity in the state. So there's definitely bigger electricity users in Oregon. I can't find any cities that have a lower electricity rate for commercial users, for industrial users than MAC. When I look at national rates for electricity, Washington State has the lowest kilowatt-hours a state, and that number's significantly higher than McMinnville. So I feel like Cascade Steel has been getting a subsidy, and there may have been very good reasons in 1988 and 1990 when the bill was having a lot of financial difficulties. And I understand that it's a challenging industry, but by the same token, I feel like if every other resident in the city of McMinnville is paying 6%, we're subsidizing, we're subsidizing their low rate. And the cost is services, right? We don't come up here to tax people because we enjoy taxing people. We come up here because we have city services that we have to provide: police, fire, roads, library, parks. And so we need to pay for these in an equitable fashion. And if ordinary citizens aren't paying for those services through our property taxes, then we need to come up with other ways to pay for them. So if we're subsidizing the biggest employer, a $900 million corporation annually at Cascade Steel, a $2 billion a year corporation, that's all of us as citizens underwriting those expenses. And I just don't think it's fair. We've been doing it for 15, 20 years. So, I mean, from my point of view, everybody in the city should be paying the same rate. Now, I agree with the public comments that have been made tonight. Mark Davis pointed out that we have been talking about a lot of these ideas for almost a year, but they're first impression for a lot of people in the audience. So I get that. I also think that, given the challenges that we've had with the pandemic, everybody up here, myself, everybody has to make the same choices that everybody else in this community makes when it goes to buying groceries, paying for gas. Do I want to take this trip? Can I afford to do it right now? Things are hard. Things are hard. And so I feel like we're in a place where the people who are in a position to help cover these expenses, particularly when they've been paying less than everybody over the last 15, 20 years, those folks do need to step up a little bit. And at the same time, I think we as a city, you know, some of the comments that have been made tonight, I agree with. And I think that that should be a cause for reflection. But by the same token, I feel like it's a fair thing to do to have a common rate for everybody with this pilot fee. But I'd have a very difficult time taking any further action tonight. I think anything else we might consider doing needs to be part of a broader community conversation, and it should be incorporated into, you know, what's our current service level budget? What are we willing to sacrifice, if anything, in terms of maintaining that service level budget? The current budget that we were looking at tonight, what staff presented, we didn't see the budget, but we saw some general highlights of the budget, was aggressive. It's aggressive in terms of addressing deferred maintenance on buildings. It's aggressive in terms of just addressing a lot of things that we have not addressed as a city. And to answer some of the questions that people have raised about finances, finances in local government are hard right now. They have been for some time. Pretty much every city in the state has been operating at a revenue, we're not revenue neutral because of Measures 5 and 50 and the impact that that has on taxes, while at the same time, the other costs that we have, whether it's employee compensation or healthcare or retirement or mandated state programs that we have to staff up for. Those things, there's things that we have, there's costs that we have that are just real costs. So I'm definitely mindful of everything people have said. I appreciate all of you coming out. I'm very grateful. We haven't had a big, a public meeting for a long time, but before COVID, very few people came out to our meetings. So I'm thankful to see all of you tonight. But anyway, sorry. Thanks for letting me go on a bit there.
Mayor, I did remember my second question.
Go ahead, Chris.
Great. My understanding, when we're talking about fare and Cascade Steel, I understand the percentage argument that you're making, that everybody should pay the same percentage. I get that. I think, though, that we have to look at this from multiple perspectives, not just the percentage, but the actual dollars that are being spent. And I do understand that in general, you talk about a $2 billion corporation, you think there's a lot of padding there. There may or may not be because it's a commodity market, we don't know. But my understanding is that currently, at the current structure that we're at, we're raising about $2.1 million in pilot. Is that number about accurate?
No.
What are we currently raising in pilot?
Currently.
Currently.
My poor computer died. It was so stressed out from the presentation, so I can't check. But it's the current pilot per, every year, we get a little over $2 million.
So about $2.1 million. My understanding is of that $2.1 million, a little north of $500,000 is currently paid by Cascade Steel. Is that an accurate number?
Yeah, that's the 3%.
So right now-
They use half the electricity in the city.
Right now, Sal, they're paying 25%.
For half?
25%.
Because they use half of the electricity.
So I'm just saying, we have to look at this from the full perspective. If we're just going to look at the 6% number, that doesn't give a full picture of what's happening. They are one of the largest employers in our town. They are providing a whole lot more to our community than just the taxes that they pay. And frankly, the reason why they're here, you cited the power rate, the reason why they're here is because of the power rates. They wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. They wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the discounts. You know, when we gave them that discount back in 1980, part of the reason we did that is they agreed to build a substation. They were looking at doing an expansion on their property or moving out of here. And because we did that, they chose to expand at the time, they built a substation, and they've been helping out our community. I don't think painting the picture the way you've painted it is accurate. And I think it's important that we paint the picture clearly as to what's happened.
Well, first of all, I can't accept the claim that my comments are negative about Cascade Steel because I am a very strong supporter for Cascade Steel and the workers at that facility. But the fact of the matter is, they use half of the electricity in the city. That's why they pay 25% of that rate. And so, you know, if you're using half of the electricity in the city, you're going to incur a cost for that.
Can I, Remy and then Adam?
I looked that way first, sorry.
Adam, if yours is on topic, I was going to step away from this a little bit, so if you'd like to go first.
Yeah, it is on topic. It's, I guess-
It's, I guess to ask a question of Sal and Chris and us other councilors is, you know, Cascade Steel operated under a 6% pilot for the first 20 years they were in this town. They were granted the 3% over a two-year period for that investment. That Water and Light put in 1.1 million for the substation, and Cascade Steel agreed to build a new melt shop. So my question to council is, at what point are they whole on that investment? They've had it for three decades, over three decades. So at what point should they be paying the same rate as the rest of the city?
And I think that's a very fair point. My only issue was the characterization of the picture wasn't clear. And I just wanted to paint a clearer picture of what was happening. You know, you all know very well where my vote is on this. So, I mean, in the, at the end of the, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm where I'm at. But I, I just feel like if we're going to present a picture to all these folks in the room of, of what's happened, they need the full story, not just a portion of the story.
Thank you. Remy?
Thank you. I think I'll, I'd like to back up a little bit and talk about where we are philosophically and maybe get a little feedback on that. Understanding that staff really needs clear direction from us in which way they're heading, that they are not able to create a budget overnight. And whether we are making up this revenue shortfall or not, or, or if we are sending back the direction which would be counter to what we have been saying for the last many years. But we have the option of saying back to staff, yeah, we want you to cut programming, we, we want you to make everything work within our existing budget. We know that's not what we've been saying to you, we know that that's not what we've put in our strategic plan, but when the rubber hits the road, we're not willing to, to raise our service levels to the standard that we say we want. And I think that that's a really large philosophical question that we really need to address. Do we want to provide services at what we consider a minimum base level? Or, or do we not? And if we do not, what direction are we giving? Where are we cutting those services? Are they to library or streets or fire or police or parks? I think the question of how is the city here right now has come up in so many different areas. And I think the city is here because over the last couple of years, the council has decided to take the direction of no longer deferring maintenance, trying not to continuously be chasing bad money with good money. As we know, we're, we're spending so much money on facilities after many, many decades of, of deferred maintenance, to the point that some of our buildings aren't really even buildings anymore. We're here because we saw massive staffing shortfalls, especially within public safety, fire and police. And we were very responsive in saying, you know, we need to undo a 20-year hiring freeze at the police department. That was about six or seven years ago, I think. I think of the, of the positions that have been added over the last couple of years, and I don't know if a member of staff can get, say exactly, but I think 16 of 21 positions have been, safety positions have been fire and police that have been added. And we've been hearing that those are services that the city really wants. There's not a great way for us to make up a 2.1, or, you know, a general $2 million budget shortfall. And so I would love the council to be thinking about, in these years ahead, really what is the desire? Do we want to have competitive pay for our employees and therefore employee retention? And hopefully continue to have employees that stay with the city for many decades and bringing with them expertise and historical knowledge? Or do we want to not pass those things as we move forward? I've said many times in these meetings, I'm, I'm not actually a fan of the city services fee. And sometimes we find ourselves in places, especially in council chambers, where we're not especially in favor of what's in front of us, but we have these difficult decisions to make. And it's why we've been elected, is not only to represent members of our community to the best of our ability, but also to be willing to be unpopular when it's time to make difficult decisions. And so I think just going into this decision-making tonight, I'd really like council to think about what their future of McMinnville looks like. And to the specifics of the proposals, you know, I would like a proposal that's something that McMinnville Water and Light and Cascade Steel can work with and live with. Those partnerships are exceptionally important to our city. I, you know, in the, the feedback and the letters that we've received and the, the, the potential for conflict, which I don't really see as necessary because we've had these strong partnerships for decades and we rely on them, I think it's very important that we are thoughtful, but also recognize that we still will have to move the needle at some point. And it's either going to be the needle of service and quality of, of services that we deliver, or it's going to be the, the needle on, on monies. So to the specifics, I think that with, with the in lieu of tax payment, I am generally in favor of, of normalizing those rates. I think that while I never like to hear, in testimony, we think something may be illegal, we have our city attorney to advise us on those things. And I do believe we have to trust that we would not be led down a path in which we would do something illegal. And, and so normalizing those rates seems reasonable to me as we move forward. And the mayor's suggestion of a 6% city services fee, I, I would be very interested to know how that compares within the mindset of McMinnville Water and Light compared to the letter that we received the other day and, and kind of how those resolutions were echoing through the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. And then the other thing that we have touched upon through a lot of conversations that might be something that kind of buys time, although not in the sense of delaying things, is that if we do talk about, and perhaps with the city services fees where I'd be interested in this, is if we do talk about some sort of sunset clause that helps us point the, look at the needle on the compass a little bit more clearly and say, okay, we have three years or we have five years in which we now can figure out the, the true direction where we're going to head. And if, if, as a council, we are not going to head in the direction that we've been charting, really, city staff and, and beyond that, the citizens of McMinnville deserve to know and to, to deserve to know early on what that's going to mean in their lives. Because we are a full-service city, and we do a lot. And so those are my thoughts, and thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Remy. Any one else have comments to be made before the council? Zach?
Thank you. Thanks, Remy. Seems kind of opening the, the floor for discussion a little bit on, on all things revenue. And so maybe we'll spend a lion's share of time on the, this resolution. And so I'll throw my thoughts in. I think, Remy, I appreciate you raising good points. You know, we, we appreciate the time, effort and energy and engagement from the people who have showed up tonight. I also think about the town of 35,000 plus that we serve and the burden of engagement of everyone and the ways in which everyone engages. I think of the users of our parks and open spaces. I think of the people who have called and asked for more programs and asked for more offerings and, and have felt frustrated at parks and open spaces being closed. I think of our pool, which we had to, have routinely closed on Saturdays and now has a tarp over it. The ways in which we have for many years sacrificed and the change in dynamic to instead of being a city that responds to crises, that actually manages to plan for a future that we have great vision for in citizens and in, in programs and in, in ways we will serve those people. I, I don't see a way we get there without providing for sustainable revenue and a sunset clause in, in our revenue discussions that we're talking about to not only fill the budget cap, but to get bold in our, in our planning and in our actions and in the facilities that we're talking about and in the offerings we want to offer. It, it requires these things and it requires them to be in place for long-term to manage those budgets. And I also don't want to take for granted the sacrifice that our staff has had to make in the last year, where they took 20%, all staff that wasn't in a union. So everyone who works for the city of McMinnville that wasn't wearing a badge, wasn't fighting fires and wearing a badge, took 20% of their time and sacrificed it for our city. So that is, has to be avoided going forward, and these are the only ways that we're going to do that. And then I support, so Mayor, I support the, the discussion around the 6% here and the rest of the resolutions tonight and the fast-tracking of the, and the, and the bringing forward of the city services fee and moving forward with that and looking at ways we can increase or institute rate reviews to making sure we're on track, but not in favor of a sunset clause at this time.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else?
I would like to, yeah, I have one more concern that I'd like to voice. And it kind of tags with what Mr. Davis brought to us. You know, a few years ago, the council passed a tax on the senior homes. And at the last hour, the most affected party showed up and said, I didn't understand you guys are doing this. I wish you'd have given me an opportunity to have a voice. They, they came here and they tried to work out a deal, and they got shut down because they came too late. And the result, that because we chose not to listen to them, was it ended up repealed. And now we have a piece in our charter that we'd rather not have. I would warn that we are being warned again. And we might want to listen before we make a decision and give an opportunity to that voice so that we don't end up in that same boat again. I don't know that they're going to do that, but they've, they've served, I heard a warning. And I don't want to be there again, see our council go down that same path. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
Well, I'll make it brief. There's been far more eloquent people than I am speaking tonight. I appreciate Remy and Sal and Adam and Zach. We've all been dealing with this budget shortfall for a long time. I've been on the council almost 18 years. And the frustration of dealing with this and seeing the budget gradually, our expenses six-point, going up 6% every year, and our income staying pretty much static at between 3 and 4%, it's very frustrating to watch. In the time of Kent Taylor, we set a budget reserve of 25%. We haven't been able to hold to that. So we went through a period of years where we were kind of free-floating, and then we finally said a few years ago, it's going to be 17%. And we're going to work very hard to get to that point. And to be perfectly honest, the city staff has been fabulous. They've worked hard, they furloughed themselves at their own initiative. They have truly done everything they can. I hate to see a budget come before us and know that the department heads, as much as they, they need this budget, and it's not a particularly generous budget in many cases in prior years, they're not only going to, they're only going to spend about 2/3 of it. I mean, if you look at what the budget is and what actually was spent, they just don't spend it because they know that we had need, we're going to have needs for deferred expenses and many other things that have been lacking for many years because it measures 5 and measures 50 and increasing per is, it goes crazy for at least another 10 years or so. So realistically, what kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to be the city that's going to be the light on the hill, so to speak? And I mean, it doesn't mean that we're doing anything grandiose, it just means we're meeting our obligations as a full-service city. I support the 6%. I mean, it basically has been the law for many, many, many years, starting in 61, I guess. And I think we should look seriously at the city fee as another opportunity.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Adam?
Lots of great discussion tonight, lots of great public testimony, especially in all the letters that came into our inboxes in the last 48 hours. So thank you for those. In general, the 6% does make a lot of sense for myself, just given the, why they got the discount to begin with back in 88 and with that resolution and how that phased in. Being it was phased in, phased out down to 3%, should it be phased back in a 6%? I heard that from Cascade Steel that they'd be open to that. So that, that's something for us to consider. I would like to continue a conversation with Cascade Steel on, on where they feel is ideal to get back to 6%. I don't want to be back in a position we were with the Care Home Association. Outside of that, I still am very strongly opposed to going for any sort of city service fee in front of a fire district vote. We do know from the memo last week that that is going to be pushed back to May from November. But, you know, that frees up roughly $4 million. So I, I don't think we should just discredit that. We've spent, I don't know exactly how many years, but seems like we've talked about it for over a decade and we've actively pursued it for probably five years. And I just think it's short-sighted for us to jump at a city service fee because it fixes our problems today. I think if we look at the fire district is an opportunity to increase service levels dramatically for our citizens, both within the city and the rural fire district. It frees up our, our taxes, taxing ability to, to reimagine, you know, court services for the city, and it, it doesn't put us in a position where we're going in front of the taxpayer with a fee which they look at as a tax that we never went and asked them for. So philosophically, I would just really like to see us go at least for one initial vote of the fire district, which has very favorable polling numbers before we enact a city service fee. We have the reserves to hold that off. Yes, we have to hold the line on our spending, potentially look at reducing some service levels at some point and make those hard decisions as a council. But if we go to 6% with the pilot, there's 500 grand. You look at the street fee and what that decreased due to gas tax revenue shortfall is when COVID hit and the lack of people buying fuel, there's another 400 grand there. You can look at what TLT does. Annual growth on that's about $140,000. And then you look at what we're going to save on YCOM dues at about $136,000. We're over $1 million in covering that $1.8 million shortfall. So can we come up, we're 2/3 of the way there, can we come up with another 3 and hard decisions of what we need to do with city court services without furloughing employees? That's my question to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Well, we are to a point where we're in the middle of the discussion of Resolution 2022-9. We have in front of us a 2022 dash, excuse me, it's 2022-19, and we have an alternative. The alternative brings us to a 6% across the board that would be brought back to that rate that was sent many, many years ago. brought back to that rate that was sent many, many years ago. I mean, Remy asked that we get a sense from each of the councilors where we want to go to give that direction to council or to staff. I think that might be appropriate, just to start and say, where philosophically are you? What message do you want to get to staff? And then I want to come back and address 2022-19. So Sal, if you'd be willing to share your thoughts.
Yeah, I think Adam actually gave the most clear articulation of the position that I agree with tonight, which is that we look at the increase so that everybody's level at 6%, potentially phase it in and negotiate with Cascade Steel on that process. And then I agreed with his math. And I also agree that the fire districting does give us an opportunity to deal with a lot of the re-envisioning of services. My concern, of course, is this one-year period where we've got a gap that we're going to need to fill. It's not Cascade Steel's responsibility to fill it, but we're going to have to figure out a way to make that work. And I agree with Adam, without furloughing people if we can.
And along with that, Sal, comes a direction to staff that we'd be willing to use ending balance funding below what we've already directed them that we want to do. So that's another consideration that you talked about. But thank you, Sal. Kelly?
Well, as I expressed very clearly at the last meeting, I really did want to do the fire district first. And I still wish that that is what we could do. I'm just very concerned that it's going to put us in a deficit situation. I mean, I'm thrilled the polling is good on it. I personally think that the public has a right to vote on something like that. I'm, you know, and you have been listening to that for quite some time now. It's been a well-discussed issue. But saying that, I mean, if waiting till next May, it's going to put us back so far. I just, I'm concerned about the budget shortfall in between and how we will make that up. So that's why I'm interested in looking at the city fee again. As much as I would rather not do that, that's how it stands. I guess we could look at the other franchise fees. I mean, I'm willing to do that tonight.
Okay. Adam?
Yeah, I'd just really like to stay with doing what we need to do to get back to a balanced budget, but not doing ad packages and not doing capital investments. And, you know, if we need to defer maintenance another 18 months before we have, you know, freed up revenues from a fire district, then I think that's a short 18 months compared to the decade we've put into doing this fire district and then basically throwing one oar of two oars off the boat and trying to row the fire district through the finish line.
Okay. Thank you. Chris?
I think I've been pretty clear in how I feel. There are two entities. On Monday, I happened by complete accident to catch the emergency Water and Light Commission meetings that took place Monday morning. And Remy, I really appreciate you voicing concerns about our relationship with MAC Water and Light because I think we're damaging them. And we better be very careful because I think that's a partner we really need. The issue raised by Cascade Steel legally is not the only legal issue on the table. And I have concerns about how that's all going to play out. I'm kind of leaning on you, Mayor, from comments you're making, that maybe that's not going to play out the way I'm concerned. But all of this is happening because, once again, we didn't bring the players to the table. I would really like to challenge the council that when we're making these kinds of decisions, we make a concerted, direct effort to bring the players to the table before we have an ordinance at the table. I think it's too late then. We didn't do that. And I'm really concerned how this is going to play out. I really am worried that we're going to end up in litigation. I don't want to see that happen. In terms of my philosophy regarding how I want to see the city be made whole, I'd like to see what budget cuts look like. I read that article from the News Register, or not, it wasn't an article, it was what you call them, article, piece done by Jeb, that expressed that we have had 27% increase in full-time employees since 2016, 2017. We've had a 54% increase in payroll in that time and that $8.2 million increase in payroll over that window. I reassert that the issue is not an issue of lack of revenue. It's an issue of increased spending. I question the statistics about where the employees were hired, since the planning department doubled in that time and code enforcement went from one part-time to two full-time, and that's just two areas that I'm aware of. I haven't dug deep enough to know where every department has been grown over the last six years. I doubt very seriously that as much of a percentage of that employee growth has occurred in public safety. So I would like to see, I agree with a lot of what Adam had to say. I'd like to see us tighten our belts like the rest of our citizens are having to do. Every person I know is tightening their belts. And we're saying, at that time, while everybody else is tightening their belts, we're going to take more of yours. That seems like the tone-deaf, wrong approach. So I would be in favor of, I'm not in favor of any of this. I think slapping Cascade Steel is also short-sighted. I'm just kind of disappointed in the direction, I guess is how I feel on a whole, and worried about what the outcome's going to be. So.
Thank you, Chris. Before I call on Zach, Chris, I need to correct you a little bit on the care facility discussion. We had tremendous conversation at the table on that issue, and they didn't like what we were doing. And they bought the vote. They spent $300,000 in calling every citizen or numerous members of the citizenry and trying to turn it against us. So I was a part of that. Kelly was a part of that. We put tremendous time and effort. And we had numerous public forums where both of us came and had dialogue. So I'd appreciate it if you'd get your facts straight because you're telling a story that is not honest.
I actually attended a lot of those meetings, Mayor. And my perception's different.
Okay. Let's go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Responding to some of the dialogue as well as to answer the question of providing staff overall direction, I feel urgent to close the budget gap and start next year without a budget gap. And I feel that the proposals in front of us are a fair way to get there. I, in recognition of my goal to open, have my service help open and maintain a successful host of facilities that are contained in the MAC PAC proposal, the new aquatic community center, the new library and renovations to the senior center, and planning for the successful ongoing maintenance and operation of those facilities, I'm open to the discussion of timing of the city service fee to not jeopardize the vote on the district or that bond when we eventually go there. I hope that, I hope that is, those two things are clear. I will also note on the subject of partnerships, that we represent the public at that table, that partnership. We are everyone's voice at that discussion. And the people across the table in a lot of these discussions that we're having tonight and relative to this are, while they may represent more than one person, are still niche and often private enterprises. And to constantly be the one that has to take the sacrifice and talk about, what are we not going to do? What are we continue to not going to do, isn't much of a partnership. And I think it is a short shrift to many of the families that depend on those services.
Thank you, Zach. Council President?
Thank you. I don't have much to add. I'm amenable to delaying additional votes until fire district comes through if we can also work on filling our budget shortfall. I do, I do think that this 6% in lieu of tax payment is a reasonable step at this point. And since that's a resolution in front of us, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
If, just want to add one. I point out the fact that a supermajority of the sitting council are current or retired business owners. And so we have, are tuned to the needs and business community. So.
Thank you.
Wasn't wasted on me.
I'm going to make one more comment. I made mine at the beginning. And, but I've heard some really great suggestions. I'm going to ask for, I'm going to ask for a motion on 2022-19 and whether you're looking at the alternative. Each of you have addressed that. I like the thought process a little bit that we have further discussions, maybe on the city services fee and do a sunset where we think the fire district is going to engage and pull those city services fees off and replace that with the possibility of what's going to happen with the fire districting. But I think we need further discussion around that. But that could be an opportunity to bridge the gap and make it a short-term fix and put a sunset into that. I think that would allow our citizens to understand that we hear their concern and that we're just not growing, growing, growing. Kelly?
And Mayor, I understand exactly where you're at. However, I would like it to be a review, not necessarily a sunset. I definitely think probably we do need to reduce things if the, if the fire district goes through, without a doubt. But I'm still concerned with budget constraints even with that. So that's where I'm at. Otherwise, your wording's perfect.
Yeah. I just bring that up as a possible solution because what we're going to be doing, and we need to send this message that we're willing to dip into ending fund balances. And that's been a large discussion that we've had among ourselves and a direction that we've given Jennifer, that she's worked diligently along with Jeff to help us be able to grow that balances back up. So that could be an alternative, but I'm not, I'm just suggesting that. Want to?
I would move that we approve Resolution 2022-19, the alternate as proposed on the dais tonight.
Second?
And was that a second, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. We have Resolution Number 2022-19. We have it moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. I think, what's that?
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
So although it is known that I'm in favor of the 6%, I still feel that tonight's not the time to vote on it. I think bringing it back to our next council meeting, having the opportunity to have the conversation with Water and Light and Cascade Steel about potentially phasing that in. And I just think it's a good faith effort by us as a city and a council to maintain those partnerships in the strongest form possible. So if we're voting tonight, I'm a no.
Okay. And we do have a resolution in front of us. And the way to put it off would be a no vote. So I think, given the nature, let's poll the council. Claudia, even though it's usually.
Mayor, given some of the conversation, can you give Amanda a chance to give you an alternative to consider tonight?
Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you, Jeff. There, a counselor can make a motion to table the resolution until the next council meeting, and that motion would supersede the underlying motion. So that would be resolved before the initial, before the original motion, which is to approve the resolution. So a counselor could make that motion.
A motion to table?
To when?
To the next city council meeting.
Do I have a second?
So that would be April 22nd?
26th.
26th. So moved to second to table to April 26th.
Okay. So where we're sitting right now is we have a new motion. We have one pending, and we have one that superseded that, correct, Amanda?
That's correct. So if the superseded motion passes, then the original motion will, you won't be voting on that tonight.
Okay. So again, I would like to do this by polling the council so that we know exactly where everyone is.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Nay.
What was that?
Nay. I'm trying to unpack the riddle. Nay. Yes.
Counselor Minkie?
Nay.
Counselor Chinnewith?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
This is to table.
Yes.
This is to table.
26th. Counselor President Dropkin?
What did, I'm sorry, Sal, what did you say?
I was just confirming that it was to table the resolution.
Oh.
He said aye.
Well, you can thank me later. I will go ahead and vote aye to table the motion as well and not put you in the position of making that vote.
Time in five and a half years, yeah.
Okay. So Resolution Number 2022-19, we have tabled that to our next meeting, April 26th is it? And that will be what will, will bring this back up. That gives us an opportunity to meet with Cascade Steel. It gives us an opportunity to meet with Water and Light. And so we are sitting with, if I'm not mistaken, well, we polled, so I don't have.
And Mayor, I'll just note for the public's information that what was tabled was the alternate, and we will make sure to add that to the council packet. So anyone who wants to look at that, it will be made part of the, of tonight's council packet for your information.
Can I make one more comment? I know I've said a lot. But I just want to say thank you to Sal and Adam and Kelly and Zach and Remy and Mayor. This was a great conversation, probably the best conversation since I've been on council. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Now, we've got two other resolutions. Do we need to go through those this evening?
You don't need to go through them if no one makes a motion.
Okay. So do I hear a motion for Resolution 2022-20 and 2022-21? Hearing no motion. Let me.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. If you're going to move on to the last item, Heather actually wanted to be recognized as part of department head discussion because she wants to get some direction from council about a possible public hearing on the Three Mile Lane area plan, which is currently scheduled for the May 10th meeting. I believe she's still on Zoom. So if you entertain that, she, I think she would appreciate it.
It's really late, Heather, for you. I think you're three hours ahead of us. So thank you.
Well, I'm actually here in McMinville now. We traveled all day. So, but it is still late. Anyways, what I wanted to do in terms of a process question is ask city council, you have been getting a lot of letters of testimony relative to the Three Mile Lane area plan. The Three Mile Lane area plan went through a public hearing process at the Planning Commission. We typically bring it to you first with their recommendation, ask you to make a decision of whether you want to have a public hearing at city council or not. And then we move forward with the public hearing process. When the public record was closed at the Planning Commission level, that was advertised as a closed public record. And so my concern is with the amount of public testimony that you're getting, it is not going into a public record right now. And to really keep it a clean process, my recommendation would be to just move forward with a public hearing schedule. Open up the public record. We can now start establishing that and posting those comments into the project record and start sort of cleaning up that procedural process.
Thank you, Heather. And I would agree because there is a lot of comment. And I think we've talked enough as a group that we ought to have more public hearings on this type of thing. We've had a lot of public input in the process, but I think we could bring it all together in a public hearing. in a public hearing. So I'm seeing heads nod, except for Kelly, you have a comment?
I just have a question. So if someone wants to talk to me about this, this is a land use matter?
Yeah.
It's a legislative.
It's legislative, so I can talk to them without a problem.
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would just caution you though, some of the, so several of you have called me with the questions that you're getting from constituents that are talking to you. We have two concurrent processes rolling through right now. One is legislative and one is quasi judicial. And some of the comments that I'm getting from counselors right now in terms of questions is really relative to that quasi judicial land use process, which is a, currently we have three property owners who have all submitted land use applications for a comprehensive plan change and rezone from industrial land to commercial land on Highway 18. When it's really specific to that land use application in terms of the quasi judicial piece of it, I just want us all to be very cautious because I do expect that will probably be appealed, whatever decision the City Council makes because of the amount of fervor on both sides of that. And I want to make sure that record is as clean as possible. The Three Mile Lane area plan is a legislative process. That's a larger area planning process, very conceptual, general guidance, that type of thing. That, that is certainly something that you should and can have conversations about. But because we have these two running concurrently, I just want to make sure it's, that our procedural side of everything is as clean as possible.
And Mayor, the one thing I would add is just, just for clarity on the public record, we'd appreciate a motion directing staff to set a public hearing for May 10th.
So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Six to zero, so staff, you have our direction.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, just one more item. You did pass out a draft letter in support of the Housing Authority Project Stratus Village. I think you would, we were looking for a head nod consensus from the council to sign.
Thank you, Jeff. I did pass out to members of the council a letter from the Housing Authority of Yamhill County if we would support a letter of support for their ability to get funding from the state for their lift program and low income housing tax credits. It cost us another, nothing. It's just giving our support and it's for the Stratus Village that's going to be providing 175 units of critically needed affordable housing in McMinnville. Do I get a thumbs up that I can do that? Okay, I'll get that out. Claudia will work on that first thing tomorrow morning.
Mr. Mayor and Council President, before we move on, can I go back to the resolutions for a second?
Okay.
Can I touch on this letter?
Please.
Before you change the subject entirely? I just want to say that we also just received this letter or a similar draft at McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. And Kelly, if we could connect to similarly move McMinnville Affordable Housing, knowing that we have the, the will of the council to send out a similar letter? Great, thank you, thank you.
And again, the reason I brought that up is just because it says the McMinnville City Council. Many of the letters of recommendation come from me as mayor, but with your name on it, I wanted your support. Okay? Anything else? Zach?
Thank you.
You had one.
I did, yes. Circling back to the resolutions, specific 2022-20 and 2022-21. While I, while I would like them to go through tonight, and I think by not doing that and moving it down the road, we send a very clear message to staff writ large that we are going to continue to not do that and is not a good message. I won't put those motions forward tonight because I'm going to assume it's going to go that same way. So fine, we're going to treat them all the same. I heard, since it's moving down the road and I heard that we haven't allowed time for, and a specific public hearing, is it worth considering doing that now that we aren't doing these tonight and we have, if we have time?
Okay, before we ask the question, how, how much notice do we need to give to a public hearing, Amanda? And how soon could we have that public hearing so that it wouldn't delay some of the critical decisions we need to make on the budget?
Given that this isn't a land use issue, the public hearing notice isn't dictated by some state statute, I would say a general rule of thumb is at least a week. So if the council made a motion tonight, I think we'd work, Claudia and I would work together to actually get a notice out as soon as possible.
Okay, I think.
And can I, to that end, can you help me, in the subject of Rust, remind me the differences between sort of open to public comment and an official public hearing?
In, in this context, it's, it's because the appeal procedures that you generally have with public hearings that are tied to land use issues don't apply. There's really not a significant distinction, except that in a public hearing, we have, our city code lays out the, the exact way that we go through a public hearing process. So rather than just, you know, the mayor essentially calling whoever turns in a comment card, we have a particular provision in our Title II that lays out how a public hearing is conducted with, which is basically the applicant testifies, then anyone in favor, then anyone in opposition. So there's a format essentially that goes into that.
And from my Planning Commission days, that was the big scary board that we had to go look at, yeah. And so would you say that allows for more of a back and forth with the person who's?
Yes.
At, at that time? So, so someone sits in the hot seat and we can have more of a back and forth with that person?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And then if, if this is building towards a suggestion to launch our next meeting with a public hearing, what I, if I recall correctly, our next public meeting is already extremely full. Is that correct?
It is.
It is full. A couple of the things that we were anticipating were, that would be coming that day are no longer, but you will have the middle housing code that day and you will also, we're anticipating doing the construction excise tax that day. So it will be a.
And the grant housing rehabilitation.
Yes.
It's already been public notice as a public hearing.
So could we?
It is a full meeting.
So could we do a work session public hearing? So start an hour, hour and a half earlier?
You can't, you can't do a work session public hearing.
Right, but I'm in lieu of a work session using that time.
So you're saying start the council meeting at six and start with the public hearing?
It's already scheduled at six.
We already have something scheduled before that unless, I mean, these are procedural things that we can.
Okay.
If it's the will of the council to have a public hearing that night, staff will get out of way.
I'll, I'll let, I'll leave it up to the council. What do you want and when would you give staff direction to have that? I know that the Wednesday, next Wednesday, we have the Juliet House Abuse Training, correct? So we've got a busy week, but.
To clarify, this public hearing is, that Zach's talking about is for the wastewater or the sewer franchise fee and the water franchise fee?
The public hearing I'm talking about is to honor the, the frustration or some of the breaks I was hearing requested be pumped regarding all three of the resolutions. So I would like to treat them all three at once again. Reason why I'm not moving forward with the other two tonight is because I'm assuming they will get tabled and we're going to just sort of lump the three together. And so I would like to hear that if we do a hearing, we'd like to have it on all three of those.
And maybe bring in the city services fee or is that?
Yeah.
Envolving it?
I don't, I don't know if that could be readied or prepared, but I mean, it seems like, it seems like if the, if, if it's to talk about bringing, if it's to talk about all of these things relative to new revenue, we should include them all.
Well, somebody put, go ahead and put a.
I would, I would put a motion on the table that we have a public hearing at the April 26th meeting for the three resolutions that were presented tonight. But I feel, given what's already on the agenda, a city service public hearing should be done in May.
Jeff, please kick me under the table if I need to stop talking. But one of the things that you could make in your motion is either at or prior to the May 26th meeting and perhaps when we look at schedules, I know that we're having an executive, an executive session already another night. We, but we'd have to look at calendars, so I wouldn't want to commit to a specific day. But if you want to make it at or prior to.
At or prior to our April 26th meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the three resolutions presented tonight.
Okay.
And if you guys do do that, I'm fine with, you know, we're here to serve and so the longer, the longer the better.
Well.
We have a motion on the table.
Within reason.
I mean, seriously, we've sat in these meetings plenty of times till well after midnight and, and I always say, I don't believe good decisions are, are made after midnight. I don't think when this body's been sitting here for six continuous hours and I, I don't think that's a great decision time. And I think it's, I think we, I think the, and we owe it to the public to not be here into the following day and, and that people have a chance to, if we're having a public hearing, it's to hear the voices so, you know, of the public. So we shouldn't be trying to do that in the middle of the night and we do have to be respective, respectful of the, the overall body of work we have, have to accomplish or that we, we, staff relies on us to make decisions in order to continue that work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree and I, I agree. I guess I would add that I am prioritizing the work that we're punting from tonight to that as, as the most important of those. And so I don't want it to go farther beyond. I'd like, I'd like this to just move down the calendar as soon as possible.
And we're, we're able to limit testimony by minutes and maybe to get through as many? I don't know. I hate to put those, but maybe we could go five minutes max?
Yes, you can set time limits, but I believe we have a motion and it sounds like we're getting into discussion, so we need to get a second before we get into discussion.
Okay, it has been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. All in favor of, of having a public hearing before the April 26th meeting? At or before?
Do we need to have discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I think that.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I think some of the counselors may want to have discussion, but yes, it's at or before is the motion.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Hold up, Mayor. The point of the second was so we could get to the discussion, I think.
Okay, go ahead. Sal, do you have a?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't.
Somebody does, I think.
Okay, any discussion?
I don't have anything to say, dude.
Really?
My discussion. You want the man to talk and you cut him off, so I was trying to make sure he got the opportunity.
Okay, we have had the opportunity to discuss. There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? That motion passed unanimously six to zero with the helpful guidance of our city attorney. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, anything else before, I've got an announcement to make, but anything else that needs to come before the council? No?
Sal's all packed up, what's going?
Here we go. It is with a heavy heart that I share with you today that my decision to resign as the mayor of McMinn, the city of McMinnville, it has been my honor to serve the community that Donna and I have called home, where we, I have been employed, where we've raised our children, we've worshipped and we've made dear friends for the past 30-plus years. Much thought and consideration has been spent on this decision and due to extended family health issues, to be closer to family, we are moving out of the state this spring. This resignation will be effective after the city council meeting on May 24th. It has been the opportunity of a lifetime for me to serve the city of McMinnville and its citizens. That includes 29 years on the city budget committee, 12 years on the city council, including two as council president and five and a half years as your mayor. I have been helped and mentored by so many of you and I call my, that I call my friends and associates. This includes city managers, city counselors, city executive management team, our phenomenal city employees and the many volunteers that have served over the years, including those in education, business leaders and other governmental entities. I would not, I could not have been as effective in my role as mayor without the city staff and want to acknowledge their hard work and dedication to our community. I have worked with so many others, including nonprofit, those in the nonprofit area that have given to this community daily. With this resignation comes a departure from my association with McMinnville Water and Light, having served on their commission for the past five and a half years. I will miss that association with this fine organization that I call family and the number, and then the other number, numerous boards and associations I have worked with, and that includes the Yamhill County Parkway Commission. I wish the very best to those that continue and those who will, are to come as we all have worked and will work to continue working on the livability and the sustainability of this community. Thank you for that opportunity to serve. I will be recommending that Council President Remy Drabkin be the next interim mayor or the interim mayor at a future meeting date, hopefully on the 26th of April. I will now turn it over to the city attorney, Amanda Gao Hinman, to provide counsel with the next steps and the process. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. So counsel, Chapter Seven of the City Charter applies when an office of an elected or appointed individual becomes vacant. When a vacancy occurs, a temporary replacement will be appointed by a majority vote of the council. The term begins immediately upon appointment and continues until the next general election, which in this case would be November 2022. Since the mayor's term ends in 2024, the person who wins the election will serve the remainder of the current term and the position will be up for election again in 2024. Assuming the council votes to appoint one of the current counselors, the council will then need to fill that position temporarily via a majority vote as well until the November election. So in summary, it's a majority vote to appoint a new mayor temporarily and then a majority vote to appoint a new counselor, assuming that a current counselor becomes the interim mayor. And then at the November 2022 general election, there will be an election to fill the remainder of the mayor's term as well as the council position if the current term of that counselor is through 2024.
Thank you, Amanda. So again, it is my intent to recommend Remy for the interim mayor. And again, we will need to notice that, will we not, that we're looking at an appointment?
Correct.
And so hopefully the council can give a nod if you're prepared to do that so that we can have that on the agenda for the 26th. So do I see?
I, I would like to suggest, you know, the fact that Remy is probably the most prepared of us to step into this position since she's served as council president for the last year. I, I think it would be appropriate for all of us to give some approval, one way or the other on this. I approve her.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second or do we not?
It, it hasn't been noticed, so let's not do a motion tonight.
So I just, if, if you can agree with that so that we can move forward, Sal. Okay.
You don't want to be, you don't want to be rude.
So staff, put that on the agenda for the 26th and then we can have a vote from that perspective. Again, just now from my heart, that was from a piece of paper that was a part of my heart, but I truly have respect for each and every one of you. It, this has been a phenomenal experience the last two years of learning to communicate through Zoom with you and with staff. But truly, I'm, I'm so thankful. This, like I say, it, it hurts my heart, but family is very important and I, I need to be, I need to be involved with my family. Staff, thank you. And again, I've had a chance to share this at an earlier meeting this evening, but I've called everyone that wasn't here. And so, and then citizens, thank you. You're just a smattering of a few, but I look at those that are in the group and, you know, we meet often. And so again, thank you for your support and, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:49. Thank you.